I'm going to call the meeting to order. And this is the meeting of the committee of the whole. And I'm going to ask that each one of you silence your devices if you have them with you. And while I'm asking you to do that, make sure I do the same as well. But I am calling the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask the clerk to call the road.
Trustee Burges, Jackson, Joseph Jones, Joseph Johnson, Joseph Zett, Peter, Joseph Carter.
Thank you for that. We have a happy agenda again, as we have been over the last few weeks or a couple of months. But not to worry, the village clerk has threatened my life if we go past two hours. So you see, she knew what I was talking about because that's what they said, okay? So without any further ado, from time to time, trustees, you're going to be here. People come before us with different incentives. So I asked Nick, rather than to talk about just the one incentive that's before us today, so he made his role go over all of them. And while you're knowing about it, it's going to help our residents understand about these incentives called different classes. So Nick, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor.
You may have a mic.
Good evening, and I hope your air conditioning is working. Well, thank you for making time tonight and coming on Hot Weather for this meeting. I just want to provide some background information for the committee of the whole regarding some of the Cook County tools that are available to the municipal governments, such as the Village of Sauk Village. So this is a good example tonight that we'll be reviewing, which is the Cook County Class 6B economic incentive tool. Now, this is a joint collaborative tool involving Cook County and the village government. However, I will broaden the discussion to discuss some other related tools, especially those with joint effort between the village and the county. But tonight, let me just focus a little bit on the 6B tool because that will be considered later by the applicant. So I'll hit on just really four points. What is it, the 6B? How it's administered in a relatively quick fashion? Give you an example, talk a little bit about county tools before we hear from the applicant. The first thing is Cook County really does most of the heavy lifting on this, so it makes it easier for the village to actually use the tool because they do a lot of the administration. And in this case, 6B incentives are really limited to specific industrial uses. There's a seven, which can be used for commercial uses. And then there's the Class eight, which is becoming more and more common, especially in southern Cook County where it's allowed and which can be used a little bit more flexibly. Again, I mentioned joint approval. This is a collaborative effort between the county government and specifically the part of the county government that administers the tax, property tax system and the village government. But basically, the bottom line is there's two parts to what a commercial or residential person like us paying taxes is the tax rate times the value, just like your income taxes, the tax rate times whatever is the taxable value. With property, there should be some relation between what the market value is per the Cook County assessor's office in order to determine the taxable value. And that's what the Class 6B does. It reduces the taxable value, and I'll get to that in a second. And then lastly, the duration. This is a fairly lengthy 10-year incentive, and then there's a two-year phase-out period. As far as administration, I mentioned the county has a heavy role, and they basically integrate into their property tax system, which applies to every single property in Cook County. The taxable value of the property per the assessor is really what we call EAV or equalized assessed value. You lower the 6B, and this is really the key point. The Class 6B reduces EAV from 25% of what the Cook County assessor determines the market value is, from 25% of that number to 10% of that number. So they just simply apply a lower percentage. And that's what's been done for this particular property the last 10 years. Obviously, the impact is that it lowers your taxes by 60% because they reduce the reduced valuation in the property. The tax rate, on the other hand, stays exactly the same. This is an example, and this, by the way, this is publicly available information. Any of us could go online and see these numbers, so this is not private. With the example of Dunkin' Donuts, which is close by, they do the same process. And I'll give you some... That just kind of reinforced what I said earlier. The assessed value or EAV is multiplied by the equalizer to get the EAV, and then you multiply again by the tax rate to get the taxes owed. And this is an example, again, public information. Dunkin' Donuts, 2703 Sauk Trail Road, they paid approximately $17,000 per year by 2021, '22 to '23, and then they're kind of halfway through the '24 numbers. The tax rate is 12.8%, and then it's applied against the taxable value. And then this, again, this is from the Cook County Treasurer's Office, and you can see what the state does is they apply an equalizer. So they take the assessed value to make it the equalized assessed value, and that gets you to $132,000. So again, this is what the assessor is making a determination of as to taxable value. It may not actually kind of fit with what you think the property might be worth, but that's a separate issue, and this speaks to how the Cook County assessor does their business. And then you again, multiply it through by that same percentage I mentioned earlier, which is 12.86%, and that gets you to that number, $17,000 owed for the tax year 2023, which was payable in calendar year 2024. In Cook County, the tax is paid one year in arrears, so when you say tax year 2023, that's really what's owed in 2024. So that's it, that's pretty much it. There are other important tools that we should be mindful of. There's the Class seven I mentioned. Class eight is really a nice tool because it's a little, I think, a little more flexible, and it's available in certain townships in southern Cook County. I think four or five townships, including the one we're in. And then more recently, the Southsboro Mayor's Managers Association, and our organization, the Southland Development Authority, who are trying to potentially utilize this brand-new tool, the Southland Reactivation Act. So you may be hearing more about that tool in the coming years, but that's something that we've been working hard down in Springfield to give to municipal governments as an alternative tool for economic development incentives. At this point, happy to try to answer any questions.
Trustees, do you have any questions?
If you thought that you were using... I think you had high aid points in the TIF areas. You have to be in the TIF.
They don't have to be in the TIF. TIF is basically a municipal tool, doesn't involve the county nearly as much. They could be in a TIF, or they could be outside the TIF.
Are we in jeopardy of losing a business in the village? Is that why you're doing this presentation?
Well, in general, municipalities want to use incentives if they feel the need to be competitive. That's a great question. I think what's unique about Sauk Village is they are in a very competitive environment, which is different than, let's say, the city of Chicago, which is a little more removed. But right, I mean, we are contiguous with Indiana almost, I think. And also, you know, Will County is just literally right down the road. So that's a very unique factor that really sharpens the competition the village faces. And that's why, in order to be competitive, especially if you get high-quality employers, sometimes you need to use these incentives, and that's why they're made available by the state of Illinois, two municipal governments. There is still a process that you do need to follow because not every business will, you know, does it make sense to provide those incentives. So you do need, still need to have some kind of process in place, and the mayor's office has developed a process that businesses must follow.
Nick, may I also address a question, if you don't mind? We're not at risk... Oh, I have one more. We're not at risk of losing a business. We're bringing to you information on these incentives because the next presentation before us will be asking us to renew an incentive that they've had over the last 12 years, but it's time to renew. And so I figured that rather than to have them come, well, rather than just to bring you a resolution blindly, it's time for us to know what's in our village and to know how we are incentivized in order to be here. But they had a 6B classification, as I said, for the last 12 years. I invited Nick so that Nick could tell you about all of the ones that's impacting our village. Then I asked the owners and presidents to come before you and talk to you about exactly what they do and where they are. This is just informational, prior to my coming before you a little bit later on the agenda, asking you to review the resolution for consideration for next week's meeting. That's its purpose. Thank you, Mayor.
I think I have one. You're speaking of the 6B designation. Mayor, you just said that we do have a company that's already here in the village that has been operating under the 6B designation for already 12 years.
Exactly.
It's time for them to renew.
Exactly.
And there's a process that we, as the village, has to go through, or is there something?
We just write a letter.
We just write a letter?
We just write a letter, just like with the Class eight. We write a letter saying that we're in support of. We're going through all of this so that you can definitely have a clear understanding of the different classes, but then also to know about some of the businesses that it's here in the village.
So a question for you, Nick. Is there, are you trying, are you trying to bring an industrial type of business to the village, or we're just strictly dealing with the business that we already have, and we're just talking about renewing?
I'd say this is strictly for tonight's meeting, business retention, just keeping a good employer in the community.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are you going to run the presentation for them too? Okay, so now that we know what's going to be asked of us, we're going to bring forth Joseph Locallo III and Gregory Nehan, and if I messed up his name, please forgive me, but they're going to do a presentation on Target Metal Blankings, so that we can know exactly where they are and what they do. You can sit right here, sir, and grab... So both of you are not... See, they hit your chairs right there, waiting for you. Thank you. But you do have to share a mic.
I don't think I've ever spoken on a microphone before, so I apologize.
As long as you remember to talk on top of the mic, the head of it, you'll be fine.
Good evening. My name is Joe Locallo, and I'm from the law firm of Mari Locallo. Mayor, village trustees, thank you for having us this evening. I'm here with Mike Bruff from Target Metal Blanking. He's the chief commercial officer of the company. And we are here today to talk about the 6B real estate tax incentive. Currently, Mike, Gregory's not with us today. He's located in Michigan. The subject property that we're speaking about is located at 21901 Cottage Grove in Sauk Village. This is a... What we're really asking for today are two things. First, we're asking for a municipal resolution that supports a renewal of an existing Class 6B incentive that exists on the property, on the subject parcel. And then secondly, the company would like to expand and build in addition to the existing facility, approximately 4,500-foot locker room facility. And we would need a separate resolution supporting a new Class six on the proposed On the original building, in 2014, the village passed a resolution supporting the Class 6B on an addition that they built. So this parcel is a little unique because there's one parcel with a building located on it. The Cook County Assessor line items improvements on that parcel. So there is an original building, an original industrial building that does not have Class six, and there is an addition that was completed in 2014 that does have Class six. So this is a little unique because it has, it's a partial Class six building, and only the addition that was constructed and occupied in 2014 is what is eligible for renewal. So if you look at the current assessed value right now, only 23% of that assessed value actually has Class six. It's not the entire building. So that's our first request. And our second request, because the Cook County Assessor allows for Class six incentives on newly constructed buildings, so we would be asking for a new Class six on a proposed construction for a 4,500-square-foot addition. In our PowerPoints here, we estimate the cost of the construction between $900 and $1.3 million. Foundation walls, it's used for men's and women's locker rooms for the facility and the conference room. If you're not familiar with the building, it's an over 300,000-square-foot industrial building situated just under a million square feet of land. They do own an adjacent parcel, which just consists of land. The company was recently, was purchased in 2022. And any kind of questions or any kind of details you'd like about the company and what they do, and who they are, and who they employ, Mike will be able to answer any of your questions. But since the purchase, the employee count at the facility went from 84 people to 145 people. So there's been good growth in this facility, and we believe that supporting a renewal for the Class six and allowing them to expand into the Class six will continue to make them grow and entertain employment.
May I interrupt and ask, of those 181, can you tell us how many is in resident who's on the village, are employed there?
I think there was 24 recently.
So later on in the slide, a couple pages, this was completed a few months ago when we submitted the original application, but there were 24 employees that actually lived in Sauk Village, 97 lived in Cook County, and 132 in Illinois. Yeah, I mean, I could just, some of the slides just talk about the investments that they've made in the facility, the money that they've spent in the structure. So we listed some of the recent building repairs, you know, which shows, you know, investment into the building, into the community, and their commitment to the property. The next slide, we show their recent capital improvements.
You guys see the Ford Explorer Aviator driving around? So all of those body panels on those cars, we produce those. But what we do is we make what's called a blank. It's a flat piece of steel, you know, and we have, I call them presses. So the steel goes in these presses, and it comes down, and it makes a flat blank. Those blanks go across the street, the Ford stamping, and they stamp them into parts. So you'll see the bodies, we make the bodies out of the doors, the roofs, the butts, a lot of the internal parts. And then we also make parts for Rivian. Right now, those are two largest customers. What we do in this area is kind of a niche. There's not a lot of people in, or there's not a lot of customers that consume these Rivian? Yeah, they're one of the new companies.
Do you, is there any questions?
I have one for the trustees. Were you aware of this company that's right here in Sauk Village on Cottage Grove? You know, you were talking. I was not.
I'm familiar with the property, but I don't, I've never known what they did.
You guys want to come on sometime and give your grand tour? Sure.
I'll come then. That sounds wonderful. We really do want to get to know our businesses who are in the village, and we want to know how we can support you, but then also how you can support us as well. So, anything else from, that you want us to know?
I mean, I could, some of the later slides in the presentation, and we can email list everybody, are just more information about the company itself. There are some analysis on the real estate tax and how the 6B affects the real estate tax, and, you know, what would happen without 6B or with 6B. All the numbers are in there, and I could share them with anybody if they have questions. I think Nick did a great job explaining the benefits of the incentive. Historically, Cook County created this incentive over 40 years ago to make industrial buildings competitive in Cook County with DuPage and Will and Indiana and Kane, because the industrial base in the outer collar counties, the tax burden for industrial is a lot lower. So Cook County struggles to maintain good industrial buildings, and they created this incentive to keep Cook County competitive. And what they've done is it's been beneficial, and it's helped maintain jobs and bring in construction jobs and maintain employment in Cook County, that they keep expanding it into commercial and into lighted areas. So it's highly beneficial, and it certainly keeps a client like this be able to afford to run a facility in Cook County. I think it's great that you guys pay attention to it.
Other than providing opportunities for 24 of our residents opposed to the 181 overall, how does this positively impact the village of Sauk Village?
Well, anytime you have a company this size operating in Cook County, everything affects it, right? The employees driving to work every day, driving through Sauk Village, buying gas, buying groceries, going to lunch, delivery trucks coming in. It affects the entire community. A lot of the times, and I'm not sure about this, but most industrial doesn't generate sales tax because it's not retail or commercial. Some nuances in industrial buildings do, which could be a bad effect, but if you don't, usually what happens and what we've seen is if you don't support incentives for these types of buildings, they just go vacant. They go vacant. And then you're dealing with a huge facility that's custom-made for a certain tenant that can't find a new tenant. And then you're losing real estate tax revenue because the assessor will grant relief for a vacant property. And you're losing all the jobs, and you're losing all the people going in and out of the village to work every day, doing, you know, buying goods and buying gas and going to lunch. So it's always better to have an occupied building, especially one with close to 200 employees as opposed to a vacant facility that, you know, is very hard to find a new tenant come in because the build-out is so special to this tenant, it'd be very hard to reoccupy it.
Thank you for that. Anything else?
I could, I could just...
I'll just... However you want me to do it. I think there was a list of you on the emails that we had going back and forth. Does he include, don't they?
I will make sure that it is after this and follow up at the end.
Okay. I'm going to share with you also why you're going to see them on the agenda again, and that's when it's time to go through the resolution. But generally, when we have guest speakers, I like for them to be at the top of the agenda, and then those that we were born collectively without them, we do that. So we will discuss with the resolution a little bit later in this meeting. In this meeting, yes. But I want, we have a couple of other guest speakers, and I want them to have an opportunity to come before us before we move into the other areas.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. No, it's special for the next one, okay? It does seem as if the village is moving forward in terms of businesses attempting to locate their establishments here. And so in the past, I mean, years ago, when a business wanted to open in the village, they always came before you. And then all of a sudden, we got away from that, and we end up with many of the exact same businesses. And so I would like us to go back to having new businesses present to you, and we don't necessarily have to approve, but we can say, hmm, we have too many of those or, you know? So it's just giving you an opportunity to know before they're here that they're here. And that is what our next presentation is, and that is by O.P.A.O. And I'm not going to attempt to pronounce that last name, but I welcome you to come to the mic. to the mic. So what do you want us to know about you?
Hello. So my name is Nellamini Hiloj.
My name is Lili Albert. They're talking to the mic so they can capture it on the recording, but then also so that our residents can hear. Thank you.
Okay. So maybe three months ago, we bought land here, maybe one mile away from here. We were like trying to start a new business, and our business is related to trucking. We make custom slippers for box truck drivers. They buy trucks from Penske Enterprise, and they don't have a room to sleep in their trucks. So we came up with an idea to customize their trucks and make slippers so they can go over the road, sleep in their trucks, have fridge, microwave, TV, like to have a life, like basically home on wheels everywhere. Besides that, we also install lift gates, repair trucks, all that comes with that type of industry. And the reason why we are here, we're, you know, trying to get this business license. Since we bought the land, we wanted to apply for it, but for some reason, we came to a problem with previous administration. For some reason, we couldn't get to talk to anyone really since last week. And then we were able to send you an email to explain what is this, our business about and all that. So first, thank you for reading our email and inviting us here. So that's all. And I mean, our business is now four years old. We used to, I mean, we started our business working outside on a parking lot. We were trying to save some money, to rent a shop and everything, and finally, we have had enough money to purchase the land in South Village. So our idea is to bring our employees here and our business and to make the community better, you know? And the main reason why we chose South Village is just perfectly positioned for our business. And our idea is to hire locals. So that's one part of our, let's say, idea, how we are going to run this business.
Where is it located?
Right now, the per, located on 22-850 Torrance Avenue. It's 1.2 miles from here. It used to be like two parcels before, so they divided it. And now, if we are driving this way, there is a right turn towards Long Avenue. So there is a forest that needs to be cleaned, and bushes and trees and all of that stuff. And next to it is a neighbor's building. So he was able to get approved, everything, but that's how we eventually discovered our future lot.
How is that going to interface with, I know, Great United Church of Christ? They have quite a bit of land too, and I thought most of their land, some of their land, I thought, expanded back as far as Long Street. It does not, have you, I mean, they've not grown anything on it. They do have a farm further north of their property, but you're not going to interfere with that church property?
No, no, not at all. I mean, when we wanted to buy a land, we hired a surveyor. So we wanted to make sure we're not getting to anyone's land. That wouldn't be fair. So we had everything in written. We have copies of a surveyor's job that he did. And because we want to put a building right now, and we ordered the building, but that's a long story. That's why everything is like stopped since two months ago. We couldn't get to talk to anyone, so.
So you need a business license, you need contractor's license?
Yes, business license and building permit for the building. And I don't know what else probably, because, yeah, business license is the first thing and the building permit. And if we need to get anything else, we would like to do it and pay our...
Contractor licenses would come next because you're talking about erecting a structure here, so we need contractors. And then after the contractors have come in, we need the city building for a year because they may would have to do the inspections again.
Okay. What kind of contractor licenses do we need?
Who's still your surveyor?
American Steel Carports.
They would, yeah, we would need their contractors to have all of their information. So we would look at the application, including through a complete listing and board of where they can help each of the families.
Yes, we have that from them. We have business license and whole building setup, how it's going to look like. And I asked them, because basically we spent all money just buying the land, I was asking them, can you put the building on gravel instead of the concrete? They said it is doable, so they are fine with that, and they provide warranty. So I think that's something that we want to do, even without getting electric and plumbing. Because I wanted to do and get the quotes, but whoever I call, they are not going to provide their license, let's say electricians or plumbers, they don't want to provide their license numbers, because it's first thing that they say, where is the building located? I'm like, it's still in the factory. So I can't do any, I mean, we don't, we can work outside, but we want to respect the law and pay everything what we need to pay.
And we want you to do that.
Yeah.
We want you to do everything in accordance to what's laid out in our code.
Mm-hmm.
And, but I appreciate your coming for the board to talk to them about your business. Did you have anything else you wanted to say before I opened up the question?
I mean, everything that I said, I think it was just to show who we are and what we do, and we respect you guys very much. So if you guys have any questions, tell us, we are happy to answer.
Any questions, trustee? Trustee Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Have they got the rezoning process? Is it zoned to do what they're asking to do?
Do it, Chris?
Yes.
Do you zon?
It is a zone C3 commercial.
And are the village zoned?
Yes. So let me explain if I can. So when we were about to buy a land, I wanted to double-check with the real estate agent first, and he said, yeah, it is zoned commercial. We came here to talk to one lady at the front desk over there, and I don't want to mention her name, but she said, no, you have to go to Cook County. I said, where to go to Cook County? She gave us the number, we called, they said, no, this parcel is under South Village jurisdiction. And we came back here and I showed, because on your website, guys, you can pull out the by parcel number, you can see it's zoned C3 commercial. So I confirmed that, but I didn't have anything in written. So I was emailing South Village, whatever email I could find at that time. I emailed and asked, can you please verify that this parcel is zoned for C3 commercial? We would like to do trucking business, this, 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 and that. And I get a response on my email. So I saved that just in case you guys ask now, hey, is it zoned or not? So I have email officially from one of your colleagues. I don't know the name. I believe it was Nick, maybe, maybe it was him or David, I don't know. Maybe, I'm sorry, but I can go back and see on my email, like, the official response from you guys.
Yes, we would like to see the zoning credentials of the businesses. Who are you talking to the mic?
Yes.
That would be excellent if we could get copies of the zoning credentials. That's extremely important. The other question is, so you just have the land right now, there's no structure, and you need to go through the process to get a structure. But you said something about the structure is just going to be built on top of gravel?
Yes.
No concrete, no foundation?
To be honest, I didn't want to get into, like, to owe the money to a bank or something for the start. That's why we paid off the land. And I was going to do a rent-to-own based on my land value. I called the company and said, can you take my land as collateral so I can buy a building from you to rent, to own it, like, for two years? And they made me a contract to pay $2,000 every month for the next two years, and then I owned the building. So they were kind to help me with that. And they said, you don't have to have a concrete, we can place it on gravel as if it's flat. So.
So you're ordering a building to be put on the property?
Yes.
So like a manufactured building?
Yes.
Already prefab?
Yes, it's prefab, but they will ship parts here and send their crew, I believe from Cavani, Cavani, Indiana, or yeah, or Illinois. So they will come and assemble the building right on the spot.
Plumbing, lighting, toiletry?
No.
None of that?
Nothing, no.
Just a building?
Just building.
No air conditioning, none of that?
No. We couldn't afford it, really.
But you're going to be working?
Yes.
In the building, building parts? You don't need electricity to plug up?
So we, now, how we plan to do it for the start, so I'll explain again. We wanted to get all licenses from here upfront, but we couldn't find anyone to help us out to show us their licenses. Oh, but where is the building? Where is this? Where is that? And I don't want to work here until I have all permits, because I don't want anyone to show up three months after that and say, oh, Nellam, you don't have any licenses here, you now have to pay fines and tickets. So for the start, we have a generator, they're powered, so we can use the electric power. And 90% of our tools, they are battery-powered. So we just charge them and use it for the whole day. It's nothing like heavy industrial stuff. It's more customization of interior of the vehicles. And you're welcome.
Hi. So you say you have a contractor, right?
Yes.
So with that contractor, he has all your all's plans on how it's going to look and everything?
Yes.
Thank you.
I send, yeah, you're welcome. I send it to you, I believe, to Mayor, right? Including the email, probably the outlook of the building.
I don't recall it, but I'll check for it.
No, the problem, yes.
Because it needs to go with your file. It needs to go with your overall file that will be me and our business.
Yes, not a problem. I can resend it maybe, but. I have it on my phone, if you guys want, I can check now.
That's okay.
Okay.
Okay, any other, any questions? Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we wish you very good.
Yes, we wish you the same. Thank you. Do we come any day to bring this paperwork, or should we do?
You can any day, I can separate it this week, 8/5.
Okay, who should I speak with? With Hilda or someone else?
You're going to speak with Hilda or to Kat, the veteran back there?
Hi. Okay, I'll bring all paperwork, probably tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yes. Okay, okay, thank you, guys. Thank you.
A year and a half ago or two years ago, we heard quite a bit about our Restorative Justice Community Court. They met with us many times and gave presentations, made appeals in terms of a program that they wanted to bring to the Village of South Village. That program is here, but I know that now that we have newer trustees and we have resident, newer residents who attend our meetings, many of you may not know about the Restorative Justice Program. So I thought that we would ask that they come in, give us an overview of the program as well as an update in terms of what they're doing. They're here only for informational purposes. We have in our midst a judge, a judge who is basically over the court over there, and I'm going to invite her to the table at this point. Know that also while she's coming, we have a resident who's employed over there. We have David Fields, so he knows quite a bit too, so he can be our go-to reference when the judge is not available. The floor is yours.
Okay, wonderful. Mayor, is it okay if I stand up here so that way I can face everyone? This is fine.
I think you'd rather have the podium also.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm okay. First, I want to say thank you so much, Mayor, trustees, everyone, for having me here today. I am Judge Ayesha Gray. I preside over the South Village Restorative Justice Community Court. And so for those of you who do not know what the Restorative Justice Community Court is, I always call it a second chance program, okay? And so the individuals who come into my program, they are 18 to 26, they have nonviolent offenses. And our goal is, one, for them to accept accountability for the reasons why they ended up in the criminal justice system, and then, two, to give them opportunities to literally transform their lives. And so my hope is that when they finish the program, they walk out new, refreshed, and I always say renewed. And so when they come into our program, sometimes they may be broken, they may have, they've committed certain crimes, maybe they need to repay restitution, maybe they need to do community service. But always, one of the requirements that I always have is that they take a look at their lives and begin to create new goals. And I ask them, where are you going to be in two to five years? And so they all create a vision board. And every last one of them must give back to the community to repair the harm for the crime that was committed through community service and what we call community engagement. And so for a lot of them, that means that they may have to get their GED, they may go through job training. We work very closely with Prairie State through their Opportunity Works Program to provide them maybe forklift training. Several of our participants have been able to get their training there, OSHA training. And so we require for them to be working while they're going through our program because we want them to be better people when they leave and be productive, not just as citizens of our community, but productive for their families and so that they can begin to build, rebuild their lives. And so we meet on Mondays at 9:30. I welcome any of... I welcome any of you to come in, to sit with our participants in a peace circle, to be a part of court. You're welcome to come in. I always say that we're doing something new in the South Suburbs. We are the first Restorative Justice Community Court in the South Suburbs. And so there are four Restorative Justice Community Courts. We are the first in the South Suburbs. And so we want to be a community hub. And so what we've started doing, we are having community peace circles. Thank you, Mayor, for coming to our first community peace circle. If you'd like to be a part of our community peace circle, you're more than welcome to come to do that. We sit in a circle. We talk about building community, how each of us plays a very important role in building up our communities, making our communities stronger, and what each of us can do to make, ensure that we live in places that we all feel safe, that we can raise our families in, and that we can feel proud to go home to. And so I invite you all to come to our community peace circle. In the mornings on Mondays, we also have, I call it, it's a hybrid of a community peace circle with our participants who are in court for that day, but also it's an anger management course. We are teaching our participants how to manage their emotions, how to manage conflict, how to resolve conflict, and to do so in a way that is productive, that they do not end up coming back into the court system. For those of you who do not know, the Restorative Justice Community Courts, we have a lower recidivism rate than the regular court system. And so the regular court system that we all know, their recidivism rate in Cook County is somewhere around 60, 65%. For the Restorative Justice Community Courts, our recidivism rate is about 13%. That is a significant difference. That means that we have stopped someone from continuing to be a part of the criminal justice system and sent them on a better path. Absolutely. And so I'm proud to be a part of the Sauk Village Restorative Justice Community Court. We sent our participants on a college tour. It is something different, completely different. And I'm going to tell you why. I had an 18-year-old who, none of his family members had been to college. His father died of a drug overdose. His mother is drug addicted. But he shows up for court every single court day asking us for help. And he said to me, I would like to go to college. And I told my staff, we have to figure out a way so that we can offer our participants an opportunity to see themselves differently. And so we had a college tour. And we took some of our participants to that college tour. There's something to be said when one of my participants tells my staff members that he's lived down the street from Prairie State College all of his life and never walked inside those doors. When you see yourself differently, you act differently. You hold your head up differently. And so that is what we are challenging the participants in our program to rethink who they are and what they can offer to our community. And so I just want to thank you all for allowing me to come in, to give you an update as to what we're doing. We consider ourselves to be a community hub. If you have not done so, come out. Visit us on Mondays at 9:30. You're welcome to do so. We're always looking for volunteers. We need community to be involved. And I always say that we are all interconnected. If God meant for us to live this life separately, He would not have put us in families and communities. I believe that. And so we are a community court. You are more than welcome to come on any Monday at 9:30. I hope to see you then. Thank you.
You said Judge Ayesha?
Yes, Judge Ayesha Gray, yes.
We have a Sauk Talk. I don't know if you, I don't know if you're aware, but every month we have a Sauk Talk. And any activity, any advertisement that you have, in order to circulate that to the residents, our clerk produces that every month.
Wonderful. I will absolutely do that. Mr. Fields? And I just want to say something about Mr. Fields, you all. I want to thank you for your dedication to the program. Mr. Fields was there when we first opened almost a year ago. And he was not, he did not work for us. He came there and he said, I'm a part of this community. Whatever you need, let me know. I'll volunteer. And he put his action to work because he was one of our first volunteers. And he now serves as a peace circle keeper. And so thank you for coming out of retirement for us. We appreciate you for doing that. And so he sits in circle with the young men and lady that are a part of our program. And so I do appreciate that. We are committed to, we hired people who were from the South Suburbs. That was a commitment that Judge Evans made very clear. And so we're happy to say that we have someone who was on our staff who actually lives and is a part of the Sauk Village community. And so thank you, Mr. Fields. I do have business cards, but normally people don't ask me for my business card. And so, Mr. Fields, if you can, I'm going to, I'll leave you with my business card when I see you on Monday. And if you could make sure to get them, I'll get everyone here a business card. You feel free to reach out to me. And you all, for those of you who don't have my cell phone number, I'll make sure you get my cell phone number as well, okay? One, every Monday, every Monday at 9:30. Yes. Now, and so we meet Monday, every Monday for court at 9:30. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, my staff is there doing the business of the court. And so that means they may have peace circles for the participants. They have different things going on. They have check-ins. They're trying to make sure that they're doing what they need to do to be a part of the program. Every participant creates what I call a contract, but it's a repair harm agreement. That agreement says, because of the harm that I've done to my community, this is what I pledge to give back and pledge to complete to be a part of this program. And so I call it, their contract with me and their contract with the court. And so every single participant is working on that agreement, that repair harm agreement. So my staff works from 8:30 to 4:30, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. 8:30 to 4:30, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Tuesday, they work those same hours, but they are remote. One day a week for court. And so I'm actually out of the Markham Courthouse. I serve out of the Markham Courthouse. And so one day of the week, I am in the community center for RJCC. The rest of the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I am at the Markham Courthouse. You can find me there as well. You're welcome. Anything else you want? Thank you again for having me.
Another thing that I thought we all needed to know. So I appreciate your taking the time out and coming to extend that information. Moving forward, we're looking at possible action items for Tuesday's board meeting. So what I mean by that is, we need to decide whether or not it is readyed for a board agenda to be voted on, dey or nay, or if it needs to be referred to a committee. The very first one, I'm going to take on that charge because that was our very first speaker. And if you go through your packet, it's not the very next one in your packet, but it is there. And I'm going to ask that we review the resolution to support the extension of their current Class 6B for that particular company. Can we go through that now, Dietsch? Let us know if everything that you would feel needs to be in that resolution is there or if it needs to be revised. While you're doing that also, I forgot to mention, we also included the original agreement in there for you with the Restorative Justice Community Court. So we can just bypass that, but that's just for your information in terms of what we finally agreed to with that. But the item that I'm asking you to focus on right now is behind that. So it's almost like dead center of your meeting packet. I'm going to ask, did you have an opportunity to read, to peruse it at all before right now? Trustee William, I mean, uh, trustee Florence said yes. Did anyone else have an opportunity to peruse this resolution for tonight? Any questions, comments, concerns where it is related? Clerk Williams, I will ask that before it's actually presented, that you, did this go before our attorneys, the corporate attorneys? I think I saw him leave out. No, he's not, he's over there. Nick? Did our corporate attorneys go through this resolution? Okay, so we do not have the cover page to it that's customary, nor the clerk's signature page. So if we can add that to it, then that would be good. We don't know. We're going to decide here tonight. Any other comments or items that you would like to see that's not included?
We discussed before on our drafts for our ordinances in our resolutions that the law, well, I see down here that Otis and put their information there. Can we add?
I don't have that.
Well, I see one here for the, says something about a grocery store?
Oh, that's another one. No, we're talking specifically about this Class 6B of extending it.
Oh, okay, that's why I don't see one. Okay, got it.
Ending sheet. Know that this resolution is of no cost to us at all. It's just, we have to do the resolution. I think we did one for another organization before. But we have to send the letter to, I believe, Cook County, letting them know that, not that we approve it, but that we support it. That's all we're doing with this one. Is it okay if it goes on Tuesday's board meeting? Agenda for consideration for adoption? I see some head nods, so clerk, note that it will go on the agenda. The next item, our internal, you still got that internal auditor there? Please scratch the internal auditor and put interim village administrator. We'll be in touch. You're more than welcome. You're more than welcome. And he's going to discuss a relatively new law and its impact on us. Mr. Fitch?
Good evening, Mayor, Board, residents of Sauk Village. You all received the ordinance for the sales tax. For those that might not be aware, effective January of 2026, the Illinois state would not impose sale tax, grocery sale tax throughout the state of Illinois. But as a effort to allow municipalities not normally receive from the Illinois state sales tax on grocery, they allow municipalities to set their own ordinance. They have a framework, which is in the package you guys have, of the village or city voting to impose a sales tax that will still be collected by the state of Illinois. The only difference is, again, as currently, the Illinois state, they charge the tax and then they send a portion of that sales tax to the municipality. Well, now they're saying the municipalities can impose their own 1% sale tax. The state will still collect it and then the person distributed down to the state municipality level. So that's what you guys have. It's effective June 1st. The state is going to repeal their taxes. But we have to get this ordinance to the local tax body of the state by October 1st. So that's why this is brought before you now, so that we can do the necessary voting on it, if you choose, and get it off to the appropriate people so that it can be effective come January 2026.
This is not just grocery stores. This is places like Walgreens, the Dollar Tree. What else do we have here? Tornado, who, anybody who sells food of any kind, okay, would be impacted by this. Okay, any of the businesses will fall under this tax. And if we fail to do it now, this is not a scare tactic. But if I'm not mistaken, if I read correctly from IML, if we do not submit now, not now now, but by the deadline, then we lose the opportunity to do so in the future. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. So this is a window for the state to allow municipality to continue receiving revenues that they have already received previously. But if they don't take advantage of it, then basically you lose it.
Any questions? Any comments? Okay, then, if it's okay with everyone, we will add this to the board agenda as well for consideration of adoption.
Thank you.
Okay? Moving on. We have been talking. Oh, no. Oh, no. We have been talking about a needed ordinance. Initially, we were talking about the one according to state travel in order to guide the amount of monies that would go toward employee travel. I thought both of them was going to be here, but I think, maybe, I think I was told that they were basically the same, that if we amend our employee handbook, that would supersede the one that was drafted in 2017. But we would have to amend. But we would have to amend our employee handbook. And that employee handbook would still have the major tenants that would have been in the ordinance anyway. I recover. Okay? So did you have an opportunity to read through that? But that's just my opening, because the clerk is going to address that in greater form, and so I'm gonna turn the floor over to her right now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as the ordinance states, we are amending Section 5, compensation, employee travel, and reimbursement in the Sauk Village 2017 employee handbook. And as the mayor was referencing, the very last tenant of the ordinance specifically states, all Section 5 on the last page, "All village ordinances, policies, resolutions, motions, orders, or parts thereof in conflict with or inconsistent with any provision in this ordinance are hereby repealed." So we are in one motion, in one motion, basically, changing the handbook to read what we're about to discuss, okay? So we don't have to do two different things. So what we're doing basically is, um, the Act mandates that all local public agencies shall, by resolution or ordinance, regulate the reimbursement of all travel, meal, and lodging expenses of officers and employees and maintain certain documentation. Now, that is our, with our IML conference coming up very shortly, and I emailed you all earlier with reminders on what's necessary. Um, what we need to do is we have to recognize the fact that we need to update this so that we will be in line with the Illinois updated travel per diem rates, okay? So what we have here is the mayor and the board of the trustees find it to be in the best interest of the village to adopt a policy in accordance with these acts. So the village seeks to ensure equitable and consistent reimbursement practices for all state travel, including travel related to the IML and other professional engagements. So this does not apply just to IML. It's any other professional engagements that the board or staff would go on. So what we're saying here is that, um, we're going to amend Section 5 of the village employee handbook, compensation, employee travel, and reimbursement as noted by striking the language and replacing it with below. So the information that you see underlying is the current language that you will see in the employee handbook. Employees will be reimbursed for reasonable expenses incurred in connection with approved travel on behalf of the village. By reasonable, it means that you should still be very cognizant of how much you're spending when you are on the village's dime. Travelers seeking reimbursement should incur the lowest reasonable travel expenses and exercise care to avoid the appearance of impropriety. If a circumstance arises that it is not specifically covered in the travel policies, the most conservative course of action should always be adopted. This ordinance applies to all village staff, official travel, including but not limited for IML events, conferences, training sessions, and other professional engagements. Village staff and officials traveling for approved purposes may request a travel advance in the amount of between $300 to $500. The advance shall be deducted from the total reimbursement amount when the traveler submits their reimbursement request. Mileage reimbursement for car travel can be calculated at the updated rate of 70 cents per mile. The mileage shall be calculated from the municipal center or the traveler's residence, whichever is applicable for travel outside into Chicago or surrounding area. When meals are included in the registration fee for a meeting, a conference, or event, the cost of those meals should not be eligible for reimbursement for the corresponding date. Travelers must submit the meeting or conference itinerary along with their expense documentation to ensure compliance. And what that simply means is, $300 to $500 might sound like a lot for a three-day conference, but when you're downtown, not all meals are covered, parking's not covered, and there's other costs that the trustees, the mayor, and clerk, and other staff members have to incur while they're downtown. So you have to be mindful of the fact of when you're spending the money downtown, that you do have somewhat of a cap and that everything you spend has to be accompanied with a receipt. So when you come back, if you did get an advance, everything will be deducted from that advance with the receipts that you bring back. And it does say here that 70 cents per mile is the mileage rate for your travel. When it comes to the meals being included, when you go to IML, you do have some meals included. You have Saturday lunch, Saturday night dinner. Friday night, there are several, um, places that give you, um, comped entertainment or meals or whatever. That's not necessarily considered a meal, but Saturday lunch and dinner is definitely comp, um, part of the registration. So it would be improper to turn in a registration, uh, a receipt for a lunch or a dinner for Saturday when the IML is providing that. And it does not include your spouse or whoever you have as your guest. Um, it is strictly only for you. Make sure your receipts reflect only what your expenses are. And travelers must submit a detailed reimbursement request, including the meeting or conference itinerary, receipts for all eligible expenses, and documentation of the mileage. All travel reimbursements shall adhere to the Illinois updated travel per diem rates. And as I said earlier, any policies or resolutions or motions or parts thereof in conflict with this particular ordinance is, is not applicable. This is the bottom line. If anybody has any questions, um, if not, we can move this to the, yes, ma'am?
One question, one question.
Uh, so the mileage, it says something about whether you start at your home or wherever. So you're saying that when we travel from our homes downtown to start to add that as mileage?
Yes, you start at your home, and then if it's 30 miles to the Hyatt, then you do the 30 miles to the Hyatt, 30 miles back. There and back at 70 cents per mile.
Is that new?
No, no, you've always been able to.
Last year was 65 cents.
The rates changed, but the fact that you can get reimbursed for mileage doesn't change. Yes. Any other questions?
I would also, um, like to say, even when you're getting that advancement in the past, it was always called per diem. It's an advance. The state has a per diem rate, and it depends on where you are. Downtown Chicago is slightly higher than if you were in Springfield. So you are, and I'm certain that the clerk will probably get that together in the, I did some links and share, um, because according to state law, we can only reimburse X number of dollars for breakfast. They allow another amount for lunch and another for dinner. So say for breakfast, the per diem for breakfast may be $18 for breakfast. So you wouldn't want to go and buy a very lavish brunch or whatever, unless you're going to use that alone with, you know, your lunch or whatever. But there are specific per diem rates, amount of monies that you can spend per day. That's what per diem is, okay?
Anybody else?
Any other questions? Comments?
Uh, trustee Burns?
Yes, thank you. Um, do you have a small, um, note that you'd like?
You have a form attached to the, um, to the ordinance, I believe. And you're gonna get more information, like the mayor said. When it comes time to go, you're gonna have everything you need. Like she said, there is actually, um, a per diem rate, and there's some information about parking and different things like that. It's very costly, even the parking is extremely, extremely expensive downtown.
Yes, parking would be $60 to $80.
Yeah, and that's part of your per diem, so, yeah. So the very last page, um, is a reimbursement form. And what it says is, if you need more than one, use more than one. Make sure your receipts are all detailed.
Okay. So shall this go on the agenda for consideration of adoption? Good? Sixty, sixty. Thank you very much. Now, public comments. All questions and comments must be directed to me. Each speaker may comment on any matter concerning the business of the Sauk Village or municipality. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter replies, or rebuttals. I will respond to all the questions to the greatest extent possible once all public comments are concluded. If I don't know the answer, I will share with you that I don't. I will take your information, and I will get back to you at a later date with an answer after it's been researched. Can we have the mic at the podium?
David Fields. Madam Mayor, I'm gonna ask that you perk up your ears and listen to what I'm seeing very, very closely in everybody in this room. Aretha Burns has put out some propaganda that has caused a lot of residents to go foolish. We have had a threat made to my wife about coming over to our house. And I can tell you this, if they come to my house, I'm gonna leave them right out there, and then I'm coming for the source. Then I'm, then I'm coming to look for the source. Because this is the type of mess that shouldn't even be allowed coming from an elected official when she is causing havoc among these residents out here and getting them geared up to wanna do foolish things. But again, like I said, if they come to our house, I'm gonna leave them there, and then I'm coming looking for the source.
Larry Sapp, can I speak now? I just have a couple of things. I'm sorry that, uh, that happened to your family, David, but it's no good to come up and start threatening people if we're trying to resolve issues. What I'm asking is that, I saw, I saw that too, David, that the trustees channel that energy into putting ideas and goals on the table, litigate and argue on how to bring forth good ideas to promote Sauk Village, to make this a better place, stop all the, we can leave that fighting back. The last administration, we all fought, we know that. It's not doing us any good to keep going down that road. All that's happened is that the people of Sauk Village are suffering for it. We don't get the productivity out of you guys that we supposed to be getting. We trust you, you are our trustees. We expect that you would do the business of handling Sauk Village in a manner that's gonna promote us forward positively. So let's stop that fighting and argue and fight about how we're gonna get to where we need to go together. That's that piece, and I hope you hear me too, like you heard David. I would also like to just speak on, uh, I think Nick was up here presenting about the 6B proposal. I think that's good for business in Sauk Village, but it just sent me to thinking that if we have these kind of incentives that we can offer to businesses, why can't we put a package together ourselves with the property that we're giving away for somebody else to sell? Put a package together and sell it ourselves? And let Sauk Village be the proprietor of these profits instead of letting somebody else make money off of our land that we're already paying them to come up with ideas on how to get a store? We're paying them to do that. And the idea that they come up with is, give me your land, I'll sell it, I'll keep all the money? And then you have to split your taxes with me? And now Anthony says that in next year, we're not gonna even be receiving those residuals. We have to come up with another form of business. So with that, do we have to split that with them also for the rest of the operation? It just doesn't make good business sense. It doesn't make good business sense, and I hope you all reconsider bringing something like that to this town, giving our stuff away. Please reconsider that. Stop the fighting, people, let's move forward, let's use our, our common sense and work together. We don't have to like each other, but we have to respect each other and work together. That's all I'm asking. And with that being said, I'm asking that anybody who has filled out an application to work on any of the committees with regard to, uh, sorry, with regard to, uh, planning, uh, uh, VA programs. The mayor is asking for people, residents, to join us in forming these committees so that we can plan special events together, together. And we would like those, they were on the back table, and I had some that I passed off, and I will turn them in to you, mayor. If anybody else have any that they wanna turn in, we want them turned in as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's, this is Frank Harland, that's Larry Sapp. My friend, I wanna say to the, the new trustees, that be sure that you're, in other words, trust is earned, not just, we don't trust it just because we voted for you. You gotta show us that you are serious about getting this village together. Don't worry about one trustee or two trustees. Don't worry about what happened last year. You worry about what's happening this year and what could be happening next year. You can't just take off on the fourth, second and fourth Tuesdays like it was before. People remembers that and remember it. Don't let this one trustee make you change your mind about what you promised. You said you'd be concerned about the people, not about the past, 'cause the past ain't coming back.
Deborah Turner. I have some concerns in regards to some things that's going on in the village. I was looking at some messages from trustees. My concern is, by being in the military, we have a protocol. And our protocol is that we have to go through the chain of command. And we have a grievance. We don't go to the general and say, you know, my sergeant, I got a problem with him. We have to go through the proper protocol. You can't get anything fixed on Facebook. You can't get anything fixed unless you go to the source and get it fixed. See, that's what real men and women do, we go to the source. We don't air out our grievances and, you know, say such and such didn't do this and that. You have a job. You're getting paid to do a job. You asked to do the job. You wasn't, uh, drafted, you know, put in prison, you know, without your free will. You all raised your hand, I was there, I saw you. You raised your hand on behalf of the village. You owe nobody else an explanation about anything but the people in this village. If you're not up to the task, bow out. You see, because you're not held here as prisoners. You're here voluntarily. So my thing is, we all want the village to be better. I've been here 20 years. There's a lot of things that needs to get done, but you have to show up and show out. You have to come professionally, and you have to handle your business. And, you know, talking to your buddy and your friends about things. If you're not willing to put the work in, step aside and let somebody else do it. Or, you know, just, just say you don't wanna do the job, because you gotta be here to do the job. Can't do the job, this ain't remote. This is up front, this is right here, boots on the ground, get your pants out. That's all I got, thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I can't remember Dr. Winston, Tanya Winston. I can't remember the judge's name, but I do remember the content of what she said. She said every Monday that any resident of this village is welcome to come to the peace circle and watch the gentlemen, the young men who've been involved in the criminal court system make amends and make their wrongs right, and then make a pledge to the community about what it is that they're going to do to add to the value of their community versus subtracting and taking away. As she was saying that, I said maybe that's something that elected officials need to do, a pledge of what it is that they would add. I, too, a resident, all of these different Facebook pages, I don't know who's behind South Village plans, South Village force, I don't know. It's really redundant. But I see a lot of bullying. And I know as a licensed social worker, I have had the opportunity to deal with clients who have done the bullying and people who have been on the receiving end of being bullied. I've seen how lives have been destroyed emotionally because of people bullying them. I've seen families have to bury people because they did not know how to deal with being bullied, and for them, the way out was to kill themselves. I'm just asking, as a resident, that we stop bullying each other. We have what we call the Fifth Amendment, and that is the right to say what it is that I choose to say. We don't have to agree to disagree. My view is my view, but you don't have a right to try to bully me into your view. Respect my view, and I will respect yours.
David Smith, resident. I've got some questions, not really any comments, because I need some answers, or hopefully I can get them regarding the June 10 South Village event. Who authorized Jeffrey Burns to collect donations and vendor payments on behalf of the village? Are you aware that he was collecting this money via his personal Zelle and Cash App? Are you comfortable with residents who are not employees or elected officials taking in money on behalf of the village? Have all of the vendor payments and the donations been properly documented and turned in? Second, or that was about maybe four or five, FOIA requests. Where are FOIA requests sent to? I've sent them two in the last week, and I haven't received a response yet, so I just want to make sure I'm sending them into the right place so that I can get some of the answers documented that I'm looking for. Regarding Southland Development, everybody may not agree, but the overall sentiment is that we do need a grocery store in the village. I'm aware that a vote was taken by the trustees last week. Was that vote to convey the land for Southland Development's grocery store approved by the trustees? That's one separate question. Separate question is, is there anything that is currently preventing that vote, if it was approved, from proceeding forward? And if so, what is that? Finally, regarding accounts payable. May 28, South Village Athletic Association was approved for $4,500 by the board, and a month later, last week, it was on accounts payable. Why is that? If somebody's going to tell me that it needed to be on accounts payable and be voted out again, why wasn't it on accounts payable on June 10? Why are we waiting a month to pay out things that are already, that have already been approved? And just a general question, how many other things that have been approved for payment have yet to be paid? And if so, why? That's it.
Coward, coward, coward. So, let me say this. Jeffrey Burns, resident, not because he just walked past me whispering in his voice like a coward, like he typically does. So, I say coward, 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 because he whispered to me. So, whenever he says anything to me, I'm going to say out loud to let y'all know, he whispered to me as he walked past, once again, proving the kind of person he is. That's why he's not in office. So, what, again, like I always tell you, Mama, if you call my name, my wife's name, know that I'm coming, period. They can try to interrupt all they want to, because again, Raven Johnson, Michelle Sterling, Taisha Jones, if I'm mispronouncing, forgive me. If you're not here to do the business, believe you're going to be talked about because your mates do, I'm doing what your mates do. I'm doing what David Fields do. I'm doing what David Smith do. That's what they do. This is what they've been doing. So, you might as well get used to it. No, we not going to start you. You give me time back because Raven Johnson is interrupting me? Please, please do so. We going to take our time.
I'm asking for her to stop the time.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, because if they get disruptive...
No, 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 no. I see the direction that this is going in, and I'm going to stop it.
It already went there, Mama, when you allowed them to call my wife's name and my name, because I'm going to answer their question. They call my name, I'm answering their question. So, he asked a question. He called my name.
I understand what I'm saying. When I stop your time...
Don't interrupt me, Larry.
Okay, no, when I stop your time, that means I stop your speech.
Okay.
I'm talking.
All right.
And when I'm talking, in between, you guys must listen to me. I am not going to put up with all of this name-calling, and then when somebody say one word, another person say, get in the middle, she going to do that? No. No one tells me what to do.
Don't want me to turn the fuck up. I'm going to say.
Okay. I'm going to...
You need to help.
...get you... Let your husband take your man.
And I'm taking your money. I'm going to say.
And I'm going to extract.
It's too much. You got to take a chance. I'm going to watch the damn hate.
I have not been given statements on what is going on, because I have no facts until I start speaking. Yes, I think not. I lost my mother. My sister had a heart attack. It's been things more known that I still in the present. We have not been given consideration on things that we have done, because all you learn about is the bad things. You're not our advocate. Who is behind South Village?
No. I am taking, I am going to take this, to adjourn this meeting. And when we learn or endeavor to be able to communicate without the cussing, without the name-calling, and all of that, we are going. I mean, the thing is, I'm sorry, Jeff, but you're not going to be able to talk.
That's perfectly all right. That's perfectly all right. I don't foul nothing. That's perfectly all right.
But the number of individuals in our presence who came up and talked about the need, the behaviors, what their expectations are, and then for us to turn around, baby, don't cry. I understand that you've been, you've been through a whole life. I understand it. I know that. Can you come stand by your wife, please?
My wife just lost her mother two years ago, but when they start name, when they call my name and my wife's name, I'm coming. I'm coming. I'm coming. But they did, they, I don't know who's calling my name. I don't know who these pages are. My name is mentioned. I'm going to mention everybody's name that I see who's mentioned in my...
No.
Period.
Sorry, you all, but I love the work that you're doing. I'm one of the best staffs out of the university college, and I'm here to find...